The May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four virtual meeting of the Anorondo County Council is now in session. We are here for department budget presentations regarding the proposed FY twenty-five budget for the county. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Smith.
Present.
Ms. Pickard.
Present.
Mr. Volkey.
Present.
Ms. Hummer.
Present.
Ms. Feather will be joining late. Ms. Roddian.
Present.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Present.
Madam Auditor, Michelle Bowler. Present. Wonderful, Madam Chair. We have six of the seven council members at this time and Madam Auditor.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Secretary, please read the Open Meetings Act statement.
The county attorney has asked that I read the following statement. The, oh, the Maryland Open Meetings Act is a state law that requires public meetings to be open to the public and to be held in places reasonably accessible to individuals who would like to attend these meetings. In addition, provisions of the county charter and the rules of procedure of the county council require meetings to be open to the public and held in Annapolis as the county seat. The virtual format of this meeting of the county council includes alternate accessibility features that the Open Meetings Act Compliance Board and the courts have reviewed and approved, such as having a call-in phone number that allows anyone with a telephone to call and listen to the meeting, broadcasting the meeting with video and audio on cable TV and on the web, allowing written comments from the public to be filed with a clerk and considered by the council, and now allowing the public to call in via Zoom and testify live. The public access provided by this technology makes this virtual meeting reasonably accessible to the public as required by the Open Meetings Act. In addition, and for all of the same reasons, it is not necessary to suspend the rules of procedure of the county council that apply to public participation and reasonable seating for the public or media or the location of council meetings. These rules have been deemed satisfied and do not need to be waived in order for this meeting to be held.
Thank you. We will begin today's presentations with the Office of Law. Please remember to introduce yourself when you speak. I'll let everybody get situated, but we are expecting Mr. Greg Swain, County Auditor, Hamilton Tyler, Sharon Darden, and Beau Juul. Good morning, Mr. Swain.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Council Members.
You can begin your presentation when you're ready.
Oh, very good. Uh, good morning. Just a few words about the operation of the Office of Law as we get started. Um, as you'll recall, we maintain three separate sections, our Government Operations Section, our Litigation Section, and our Human Services Section. You are very familiar with our Government Operations Attorneys who appear before you twice a month and provide support, research, and advice to your legislative efforts and support of the administration and the council's legislative work. Our Government Operations Team is also responsible for prosecution of code enforcement cases, legal advice to our licensing departments, purchasing, tax sales, land use matters, and just general legal advice on issues arising out of the county code. Of course, you know, our two lead attorneys, Lloyd Blair Klosmeyer, who is our Deputy County Attorney for this section, and then Kelly Kenny, who is the Supervising County Attorney for this section. The Government Ops Team is ten lawyers, two support staff, and one paralegal. Our litigation team provides all litigation-related services to represent the county, including legal defense for any claims uh, raised against the county or the Board of Education under the county's self-insurance fund. Our litigation team also handles all workers' compensation matters, personnel matters, NPIA requests, and other, all other types of civil claims. The litigation section is led by Deputy County Attorney Hamilton Tyler, and Phil Culpepper is the Supervising County Attorney. And this team includes ten attorneys, three support staff, and three paralegals. The litigation team also handles our affirmative litigation cases, and I do have a summary of our current cases and their status that I can provide if desired. Uh, just a couple of notable recent updates on those cases. Uh, in our climate change case, which is pending in Anorondo County Circuit Court, we had hearings in March on uh, the various defendants, I think there's about thirty-two of them, uh, motions to dismiss. And on um, May fifteenth, the Circuit Court issued an order deferring any decision on those motions dismissed and allowing the case to proceed to discovery. So we view this as a very positive development. Um, one other note on a case of interest, it's not affirmative litigation, but it's a case arising out of Councilwoman Roddian's uh, ordinance requiring gun shops to distribute literature regarding suicide prevention. Uh, as you know, in that case, we prevailed at the trial court level and also prevailed before the uh, Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals. On May seventeenth, the plaintiff's attorneys, who've lost at every stage, uh, filed a petition for certiorari with the United States Supreme Court, asking that court to review the decision of the Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals that affirmed the US District Court. Uh, we're working with our co-council to analyze the petition, and the High Court will let us know if a response is necessary. This will probably be on their fall docket, so we should hear something in the fall. Uh, lastly, our Human Services Team represents the Department of Social Services and provides legal support and representation in litigation regarding children in need of assistance matters, termination of parental rights, and adult guardianships. The Human Services Team also falls under Deputy uh, Ham Tyler, and Kevin Outing is the Supervising County Attorney in that section, which includes three attorneys and one support staff. The rest of our offices, myself, I'm the Department Head, my administrative assistant, our office manager, our supervising paralegal Pam Grove, who I know you all know well, and our legal tech specialist. So our office is a total of twenty-four attorneys, nine support staff, five paralegals, thirty-eight total. As you can see, our budget is primarily personal services. Uh, we have one supplemental request this year, and that's for funds to replace two of our aging primary computer systems. Uh, the one is our time management system, which is called Time Matters, and the other is our document management system, which is called World Docs. Both are over twenty years old. Uh, they've had compatibility issues continually, and the new systems offered by these vendors are much more expensive. So we have approved a program uh, used by other local jurisdictions that does both of these functions, both time management and document management. It's called Hi-Q. It comes from Thompson Reuters, who is the same um, company that maintains our Westlaw legal database, so we do have an existing relationship with them. That's our one supplemental request. I am happy to answer any questions. We would ask for a favorable review. Thank you.
We'll begin with council questions. Uh, Ms. Hummer.
Yes, thank you. Good morning.
Morning.
So, I know that our office um, in the county council has been seeing a real increase in PIA request. Um, are you seeing that as well in the Office of Law?
Generally, over the past few years, we have noticed that increase, and um, one of the things that we are doing actually this summer to try to address that is we have an existing position that we are filling with an attorney um, who is going to be dedicated to NPIA requests. So the way our office has been set up traditionally is our NPIA analysis has been done as part of our litigation team um, and sort of a side issue for the attorneys doing litigation. With the increase in NPIA requests, we are beefing up that aspect of it. So right now, we have one of our litigation attorneys who's doing it as included in her other duties. We have another attorney who actually works on our GovOps side, whose primary role is NPIA. She also does some code enforcement. We're bringing in a new person who's going to be on the litigation side, but dedicated to NPIA as well. So we'll basically have two attorneys who will be dedicated, that their primary duty will be response to and analyzing NPIA requests. Uh, and we hope to also provide a more centralized conduit for NPIA requests coming into the county. Um, so, so our team, our two attorneys have an opportunity to sort of gatekeep uh, requests as they come in and offer assistance as needed and allow the routine requests to still be um, complied with by the departmental custodians.
Well, that was my next question. Do all NPIA requests come through the Office of Law, or does each department handle it separately?
Each department has a custodian, and what we, what, and we work closely with those custodians. So whenever there is a, a large request or a request that has an issue, it's not simply, give me, you know, a copy of a building permit, they would consult with our team. Um, that's done a little more informally now, and what we're looking at is to try to have that more of a formal process where it's all going through the Office of Law. Um, just so we have a chance to put our eyes on everything um, and sort of centralize how that, how those requests come in.
Well, and that goes into my next question. What, so how many are we receiving as a county in a year? And do we actually know that if they're all being handled by different departments? Do we really have a handle on how many we're, we're, that are coming in?
Well, there's two ways a request can come in. I mean, we have a formal portal, and that's the preferred method where it all goes through OIT and that's funneled to different department heads. And those are easy to monitor, and that's done through our Rundle Stat program, I believe. Um, but someone can come into an office and simply say, I want a copy of a permit, and that is, is in effect an NPIA request, uh, because there's no particular form that the request needs to make. So those are probably not tracked as closely. Um, as far as how many requests we get a year, I'd have to provide you with that information. But uh, as you can tell, you know, we get a lot. We get an awful lot, and some of them are very large.
I'm sure, yes. I know just within the county council offices, we get a fair number, and some of them are pretty extensive. Um, so when you say this, so there, is there a log that keeps track of the ones you've, not the, as you said, maybe some are walk-ins, which are technically, but they wouldn't be there, but through your portal, do we have an overall log of all the ones that come in?
Through the portal, there should be, yes, I believe there is a log.
Okay, so if, can the general public view that log, or can the council see that log of what all has come in?
Well, the general public, anyone can see information via an NPIA request unless there is a privilege that prevents disclosure. So um, unless there was a privilege that would prevent disclosure, that log should be available, and I do believe it is part of the Rundle Stat public facing information that's provided on the county web.
So, so it, the council members could go on there as well. We don't have to, we don't have to file a PIA request to see the log of PIA requests. Okay.
Now, the intent is that it be, that all that information as far as statistics is available on the county website, so.
Okay.
Um, and if it's not, I, and I haven't looked, so I'm, I'm not certain, but that's one of the reasons why we want to centralize it, so that information is more easily managed.
No, I mean, I think that that's a good move for your department because, you know, just to centralize that and do it. So do you have um, when we have, you know, since it's in different departments and everybody's handling, is there standardized language that people use in response to PIA request? Or is everybody, is there a standardized language, kind of a template for how you respond? Or is every, every department doing it a little differently?
Well, there's two types of response that are required. One is what's called a ten-day letter, which is basically acknowledging we got the response, and either here's your document, if it's a simple response, or we need additional time. And if it's a, a large request, we're going to give them an estimate of what the costs are involved in complying with the result. The second response is the thirty-day response, which is the actual documents, you know, unless that's extended for a good reason. So the initial ten-day letter is a fairly standardized response, uh, either acknowledging receipt and further action to come, or acknowledging receipt, and here's your document.
Okay. So, for example, if there was an employee who was dismissed after an investigation, and somebody filed a PIA request about it, would the standard response be that this is a personnel record? And so not subject under here, or would the response be that the result was because of an investigation into misconduct and it can't be released? How much detail do you go into in those responses?
Well, I think it, it, it depends. So a ten-day, a response via a ten-day letter to a request for personnel records, if that's all the request is seeking, then this is coming from someone who's not authorized to receive those records, because certain people can view personnel records. Um, the response of the ten-day letter may be that those documents are not, not disclosable under the NPIA because they're personnel records. It, now, what usually happens is there's more, the request covers more than just personnel records. So it may be that there are other requests that could require a response and could require further action via a thirty-day response. So the thirty-day response may be, these records you've requested are personnel records and cannot be disclosed. Your other request concerns whatever, and that can be disclosed. So again, it depends on the nature of the report.
But it would seem to me that if it's a personnel record, that the PIA request should not include that it was, you know, result of an investigation to misconduct, because that seems to be sharing information about that personnel record. So, just, so, um, so I, I'll, I'll let, um, I see Mr. Volkey's hands up, so I'll step back for right now.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So following up on that same line of questioning, um, hypothetically, a county employee, maybe a supervisor, wants to see emails that were sent by a subordinate. Would that be treated as a Public Information Act request if the county employee made that request to get that information from another department?
So the county employee is not a supervisor?
The county employee making the request is supervisor. The county employee making the request is a supervisor wants a subordinate's emails. Is that considered, if they went to another department and said, I want information, or I want a report, is that considered a Public Information Act request?
Well, I would not consider that a Public Information Act request with a couple caveats. So we have, of course, we have two branches of government. We have our legislative branch, and we have our executive branch. Um, under the executive branch, the county executive um, has the ultimate supervisory authority. Um, and all the documents, electronic documents, et cetera, are all the property of the county. So, I, in that situation, if, as, as a supervisor myself, if I wanted to see emails from an employee, I would be able to have access to that, because those documents, that information is county information. Um, it's not an NPIA request. Now, an employee could make an NPI request about another employee's email, and in that circumstance, all the privileges applicable to NPIA, you know, would apply and would have to be analyzed in that context.
Understood. So I guess if, if I'm following you correctly, it's almost like the top in the supervisory capacity has the ability to see the subordinates, but people who are co-equal or someone who is at a lower level looking up, they would not have the same access to those emails or records or anything like that. That would be the NPI re, NPIA request. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. So if the supervisory employee is looking for a subordinate's records, anything like that, emails, and that is not a PIA request, would there be a record if that had been requested?
Not that I can think of, no.
Okay, alright.
Other than an email chain.
Sure, understood. But that would not be something that would show up in the NPIA log that you were referencing? Yeah, okay. And you indicated that you would respond um, provided that there was not a privilege that attached to an NPIA request. What privileges typically attach? What are the normal responses there that would be uh, something you'd use as a, as a basis to not provide?
Well, in the um, statute concerning NPIA, it lists a number of different kinds of privileges. Some of them are mandatory privileges that apply throughout. Some of there are, some of them are discretionary privileges that can apply depending on the impact of the information, and some are, there's a catch-all privilege as well. But for instance, personnel records are generally not disposable except to the supervisor of that person or the employee. Um, and there's some stretch on that, because county, uh, if there's internal investigations, um, those personnel records can be accessed in some circumstances for that type of in, investigation as well. Um, attorney county privilege is another uh, typical uh, privilege that's asserted that would prevent disclosure under NPIA. There, there's a number of them. There's trade, certain trade information's not disposable. Um, adoption records, things like that, juvenile records. So there's, there's a long list. Most of them are discretionary, but quite a few are mandatory as well.
So would an email from a supervisor to another person in the county seeking records of a subordinate be something that has any privilege attached to it with respect to an NPIA request?
I, I would say if this was an executive branch supervisor seeking an executive branch employee's information, that's not a, that's not a request under the NPIA. That is a, a request simply under um, supervisory authority and county custody of all county information that, that is owned by the county.
And so if someone, if there was an email chain on that, that email chain would or would not be protected by privilege under an NPIA request?
If there's an email chain about.
So if an outside party wanted to see the email chain between the supervisor and somebody else to obtain records of a subordinate, would any of the emails over here be protected if the third-party person came in and said, I'd like to see those? Is there any privilege under the NPIA that would, that would prevent disclosure?
Well, uh, I'll give you my view of that. I don't have it out here in front of me. There could be, is what I would say. But it would be analyzed in that context to say whether there's either a mandatory prohibition against disclosure or a discretionary prohibition against disclosure. Um, and if one of those were to apply, it would not be disclosed. But if it did not apply, then it would be disclosable.
Okay. So, I don't know if you watched earlier this week, we had OIT in for a budget presentation, and during that presentation, there was a question that was raised to the Director of OIT about whether a request to see a county employee's email from a supervisor would be considered an NPIA request or not. And the Director of OIT indicated that yes, that would be considered an NPIA request, and that such a request would immediately be sent to the Office of Law, and the Office of Law would then assist in fulfilling that request. But what you've said today, sounds like that is not the process. It sounds like that would not be treated as an NPIA request. It sounds like that would be something that's handled internally. So is there any policy or procedure on any of this?
Well, I think that's a good answer that, that he gave, because it should be treated in their contacts as an NPIA request, because we are the ones who would want, who would analyze it and determine whether the NPIA applies to that, or whether this is an internal request um, concerning custody of county documents. So I think the fail-safe process for any county agency receiving a request like that would be to treat it as an NPI, I, request and refer to the Office of Law for further analysis. However, I think ultimately, that type of request, you could view it as an NPIA request, right? But I don't think those privileges are going to apply in that context, because you're talking about supervisory authority internally in county government, over documents or information that is in the custody and owned by the county.
Yeah, I, I'm following that, and I guess what I would say is, I agree with you. What the answer was is a best-practiced answer, right? That is, that is something we should be striving for, and it sounds like that's even something you want to move your department through this budget process into. Great. But I also didn't hear that was what was actually practically happening when you explained the process of how these types of matters are handled. And it sounds like until you get to that best practices place, this is being handled a lot more informally than the answer that we were given about best practices. So that's why I'm asking if there's any policy on this internally. Is there something coming? Is there something you all are developing that's going to say, this is the way you have to handle these requests? If a supervisor in the county comes to another person and seeks records for another person, how is that governed? Are you working on a policy or a procedure for that?
Well, we are working on, as I said, trying to restructure the whole NPIA request policy, so it all goes through the Office of Law. Uh, but the, but what you mentioned is not a common, not a common occurrence that we see. Um, I think, you know, really, when we're talking about information for the county, we're talking about two agencies. We're talking about OIT, because they manage all of our data. We're talking about Central Services, because they are the records management authority of the county. So either of those two entities are in control of that information on behalf of the county. If their response to our request for a supervisor requesting information is to say, we're going to take this to the Office of Law, because this could be an NPIA issue, that is exactly the right answer. And we would analyze it to determine whether that information is subject to protection, because the protection's under the NPIA, or whether that is subject to the general supervisory authority of the county executive um, and the custody and ownership of all county information by the county.
And that response that you all provide, would that be considered covered by attorney-client privilege, the advice that you're providing to the Office of Law, or Office of Information Technology, excuse me?
Well, generally, anytime we're giving legal advice, it's going to be protected by attorney-client privilege.
Do we have any other questions for the Office of Law regarding their operating budget? Ms. Hummer.
Yes, um, I know we have a fraud, waste, and abuse hotline. Um, how, how much is it used? Have we gotten good, do we get much traffic there? Have we been able to root out some waste, fraud, and abuse?
Well, I, as far as how much has been used, I would say seldom. Um, it is something that we monitor in our office. Um, and we try to keep a level of independence with that. Hamilton Tyler, who's here today, he was the one who manages that, and it's, I believe it's a call-in line. There's some, maybe some other mechanisms for doing it. Um, it does get used. It's not something where we're getting multiple calls a week or even a month, I believe.
How is, how do employees, how, how are people made aware of the hel, hotline? Is it posted in certain places, or?
I believe so, but Ham, if you want to, um, if you can answer that question, that would be helpful.
I believe there is a post, uh, it is posted somewhere on the website. There's also uh, an email, which is about to be sent out. I've got a tickle actually for June first that goes out to everyone. Uh, so there is an email dedicated to it with an email address and then a uh, phone number as well.
Is that, um, is that line open um, just to employees, or is it, can the public report on that as well?
Anyone can report.
Anyone can. And do they have to do it online, or is there also, I mean, can they do?
No, they can.
Can they call or online, or is it just?
I think just calling or online is
Okay.
the options.
Alright.
But if they sent me a letter, I'd get that as well.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Tyler, I just had to chuckle at you uh, calling it a tickle, because that's in, that's only a lawyer knows what that means, and my paralegal thinks that's the weirdest thing ever, so we just call him Tasks anymore. Um, anyway, alright, so I, I wanted to ask you about outside counsel. Have there been instances previously where the Office of Law has had to engage outside counsel because there may be a conflict? Uh, just, you know, obviously the challenge of one firm effectively representing disparate interests. And when that happens, do you have a budget for that?
So I'm going to, to um, let Ham answer this question, though I'll give a preface, is oftentimes um, in civil litigation, for instance, uh, the Board of Education may get sued, and an individual teacher may get sued. Um, due to the nature of the charges against the individual teacher, we see a conflict, and under, we have choices. It, under certain circumstances, we can decline representation um, to that individual teacher. Um, or under other circumstances, we can hire outside counsel for them if there is a conflict and our representation. So Ham, if you want to expand on that, please.
Yes, I mean, a, as, as you know, uh, as an attorney, in, if a conflict situation exists where to represent one party would be a conflict of interest in the other party, the, the Office of Law can't represent both of them at the, at the same time. And so there have been instances um, in the past where, or there have been instances in which we engage outside counsel on behalf of the, of one of the parties to remove that conflict. When that occurs, the um, those fees are paid by risk management out of the self-insurance fund. So it doesn't come out of, it doesn't come out of our budget, it comes out of the self-insurance fund.
Okay, thank you. And have there ever been instances that you're aware of where one branch of government needs to secure outside counsel to provide independent advice vis-à-vis the other branch of government?
I don't know that I'm aware of any independent advice. There, there are times are specialized uh, folks that are so specialized that we need, or fields that are so specialized that we need uh, advice. I know there's a firm that provides some services to O, both OIT and Office of Law, I guess, for cable issues that are incredibly complicated that I have difficulty grasping, but I, I read the stuff and, and try to digest it. So there's that. Um, there are, there's outside bond counsel for specialized issues with bonds, I know, as well. Those are the two that come to mind.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I don't see any more questions regarding, for my colleagues, uh, regarding, oh, Ms. Hummer.
As we were talking about um, the fraud, waste, and abuse hotline, um, wh, are, when you receive um, complaints about a possible fra, fraud, waste, and abuse, are those complaints forwarded on to the auditor? Is that how they're investigated?
Uh, they are not. They typically, they, they come to me, and then I And then I investigate and usually I'll go to probably the department, in some cases, the department head. And they will assist with the, assign somebody to assist in the investigation or, or I'll do it directly. And as Mr. Swain mentioned there, they're very infrequent.
Right. It's kind of, but the county auditor is not involved in, in those complaints that come through.
I don't believe so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, I don't see any further questions. Speak now, folks. If you wave those flags, if you have a question for the Office of Law operating budget. Thank you, gentlemen, for your time this morning. We'll move ahead to our next presentation from the state's attorney. Take a minute to transition here and. Good morning.
Morning.
When you've got your team assembled, you can start your presentation. Welcome. Thank you for being here this morning, Ms. Colitis.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Kyle Madden. I'm with the Budget Office. I'm the Budget Analyst for the State's Attorney. You can find their budget on page three twelve of your budget book. And I'll turn it over to the State's Attorney for her presentation. And I'll be sharing my screen.
Good morning. Thank you, Kyle. Once again, for all of your work on our budget. You are extremely helpful, organized and knowledgeable, and you make our lives much easier in this very busy budget season, as well as Chris Trombauer. He does a great job for any questions that we might have or that you may have. So I appreciate all your help and I'd like to thank Deputy State Attorney Jessica Dagel, who does our budget every year and she does an excellent job. So our office is committed to justice by employing the highest ethical standards and vigorously prosecuting the guilty, protecting the innocent and representing the interests of the state of Maryland in court. Our key objectives are in the budget book each year and it's in line with our mission. We're also committed to being very fiscally responsible. This year, we are not asking for any additional positions or any major increases. We are just asking for a, a hybrid SUV slightly bigger than the one that we've had for one of our investigators. And we'll talk about that in one of our slides. You can go on to the next slide. This is just a representation of our four different locations. We have two district courts, main circuit court where all of the felonies are, or in the courthouse. We share space on the second floor. And then we have our body camera review office on Best Gate Road, which is an excellent location, satellite location for our body worn camera paralegals. The State's Attorney's Office has about six hundred and seventy thousand dollars in grants. And, and we've applied for about fifty thousand more in fiscal year twenty five. Those grants pay for a portion of six employees. Most of them, if not all of them, are contractual employees. We have paralegals in drug court. We have victim witness advocate. We have a data analyst and we have an assistant state attorney in drug court that are all paid for almost completely by grant money. You can go to the next slide. This is just a visual breakdown of our office. I, I never can remember the exact number, but it's about a hundred and forty four employees, including part time and grant employees. We have funding for fifty seven attorneys, prosecutors, and we have two deputy state attorneys. You can see that Brian Marsh supervises the felony trial teams and all the victim witness advocates and the support staff in the circuit court. And Deputy Jessica Dagel supervises all of our district court, our body worn camera unit, the police investigators, the general felony juvenile and jury trial prayer team, as well as our budget and personnel issues. You can go to the next slide. So we recently had our National Crime Victims Rights Week awards ceremony. We do that every year in Anaroma County. We've been doing it for, I think, about thirty five years now. And we had this ceremony on April twenty fifth. And the photo on the left, there are three women who came to court and testified. One was a victim of a serial rapist. And our office learned that the offender had also sexually assaulted two other women. And we were able to meet with those two other women and they provided key testimony in both a motions hearing and a trial. And we were able to use other crimes evidence against him and we were able to obtain life without full sentence. And it was really quite remarkable to have two strangers, two women who had never met our victim, willing to come into court and tell a jury what had happened to them years and years ago by the same man. And so we presented them with an award for their commitment to helping victims in Anaroma County. Our middle photo is a picture of Raya Leonard, who is the manager of the Abuse and Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault Program at Luminous Health at Anaroma Medical Center. She's been in that position for more than twenty years. She received the Warren B. Duckett Junior Memorial Commitment to Justice Award. Warren Duckett was formerly a circuit court judge and a longtime state's attorney here in Anaroma County. He's actually the, the person who founded the Victim Advocate Program here at the State's Attorney's Office and, which was the first in the state of Maryland. So we honored her with that award. And then the last picture on the right are a man and his son. The man was a victim of an attempted murder. He actually witnessed his coworker murdered by another coworker. Or rather, a relative of a coworker. And he was seriously injured and his twelve year old son, he was actually ten at the time, took care of him for many, for many months after he was recovering. Came and testified in court and we got a conviction. And so we honored both son and father for their commitment in this case. You can go to the next slide. So this is just some of the things that we do in the community. We, up on the top left corner, our office collected gifts for more than sixty five local children through the Anaroma County Christmas Angels Program. The photos on the top, middle and right are from our National Night Out, which promotes police community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighborhoods safer and more caring places to live. We participate every year in that. The bottom left picture is one of our many presentations we do for seniors and other members of the community. Where we try to help seniors recognize potential criminal activities such as exploitation, online predators, that sort of thing, financial fraud. So we, we do these presentations probably several times a month to different community groups and senior groups, as well as talk to teenagers and, and other members of the community about how to prevent becoming a victim of a crime. Go to the next slide. So we continue to be committed to training our staff. On the picture here is our Training Director Kelly Poma. She prosecutes homicide cases in the violent crimes team for many, many years. And she's an excellent person that we elevated to this training position. She still prosecutes criminal cases a couple a year, a couple homicides a year. But we recognized her ability to train prosecutors in the office. So she trains every single new prosecutor as well as the established attorney. She also gives training seminars for our county police officers. She works with the Training Academy and she gives in-service as well as new academy trainees some information. We also are committed to sending our team out to local and national conferences so that they can continue to hone their skills. If we can go to the next slide. So one of our major accomplishments this past year is we got a state grant from the Governor's Office of Crime Control Prevention for a bilingual advocate. And this is one hundred percent paid for by the grant, both salary and fringe benefits. And this is very helpful to have someone who can speak to victims and witnesses in their native language. And I think the majority of our, our victim advocates' time is spent trying to form relationships with victims and witnesses and get their, earn their trust, get their trust and get them to come to court. And so we're very happy to be able to do this at no cost to our county. We've also just submitted another application for this grant for next year. And we, we expect to be awarded the grant so that it will continue into the next year as well. Next slide, please. These are just some of the headlines. We're pretty proud of our accomplishments. We have an excellent track record in, in violent crime prosecution for homicide, sexual offenses and things of that nature. As I said before, we, we got a life without full sentence for the serial rapist, which is pretty hard to do for non homicide cases, but we were able to prove. And the jury found that he was a sexually violent predator. Next slide. Just a couple more of our, our headlines in the last year. Some of the most difficult cases that we have are cases involving child victims. And one of our biggest cases is that an off duty Baltimore City Police Officer killed his stepson in their home. And we got a forty two year sentence for that this past year. Okay, next slide. Two of our, members of our staff, Joan Stamets, who is our, our Director of Victim Witness Services. She was honored by the Maryland State Attorney's Association as an outstanding advocate for victims. She manages seventeen, approximately seventeen advocates in our office. She assists victims and witnesses with relocation if they're in danger. She also helps with major homicide cases as an advocate for them. And she's just considered one of the best in the state. So we're, we were thrilled for her to get that award. On the right is Maro Williamson, who is a prosecutor in our narcotics and felony division. And she was recognized by the Daily Records as one of the top one hundred women in Maryland. Okay, next slide. This is our, one of our investigators, Jeff Malott. And as I said, our request this year, the only addition is that we are asking for additional funding for slightly larger SUV. Jeff is not going to be the recipient of the slightly larger SUV because he likes his little car. He thinks it makes him not look like a police officer. But our investigators drive a lot of victims and witnesses to court. They help with relocation and they're constantly driving large groups of people to court. And we need the slightly larger SUV because of the number of people that we have to drive. Just last month, we had to drive someone in a wheelchair and having slightly a larger SUV will help with being able to transport, you know, people who have things like a wheelchair or luggage, that sort of thing. So. Next slide. And that is the end of our presentation. This is a picture of the woman in the middle in the black and white, had been with our office for more than thirty five years. And she just retired this past year. This is right outside of our circuit court office. And we, you can see some of our prosecutors and advocates here. I'm there in the middle. If you can, it's kind of a Where's Waldo picture. You can figure out people who you know. And that's it for our budget presentation. I just want to say thank you for all the help that, that everyone has given us in preparing this budget for FY twenty five. Thank you. I can't hear anybody. Someone's talking.
Sorry, muted and muted. Do we have any questions for our state's attorney regarding their operating budget? I do not see any questions. Ms. Colitis, you always present really well and we always love the information, at least I do. So thank you for being here. Again, I don't see any questions. So thank you for your time this morning and all the work that you do through the year.
Well, thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Our next presentations have both operating and capital. So we'll start with the Police Department. And as we transition, we will see Chief Howard and Deputy Chief Catherine Roberts and their team. When you are assembled, you may, you have the floor. Good morning.
Good morning. This is Bo Zhao from the Budget Office. I'm the Budget Analyst for the Police Department. Their FY twenty five budget can be found on page two hundred and sixty eight of the proposed budget book. With that, I'm going to turn it over to the Chief for her presentation.
Thank you, Bo, and we appreciate you and all your work, working on this budget with us this year. Good morning to everyone. I want to begin with just thanking this esteemed body for your work with the County Executive and his executive team with last year's budget. The additional positions that you all afforded us increased our authorized strength to eight hundred and eighty four police officers and two hundred and fifty four professional staff members. So we continue in our efforts to give our very best with regard to recruiting. We appreciate the County Executive, Mr. Stewart Pipp and his administration, this council, the members of our Public Advisory Board and our community for your continued support and investment in our Police Department. To include the newly negotiated starting salary of seventy thousand dollars. It's the highest of any county police department in the state of Maryland. Enhancing our ability to compete for the best and brightest recruits and ensuring that Anaroma County does remain the best place for all. Last year, you supported our newly proposed real time information center, the Arctic, as we've called it. Joining some of our neighboring Big Seven jurisdictions with Twenty First Century Policing with regard to technological advancement. Prince George's County, as a matter of fact, is in the research and development phase of this asset as we speak. This resource honors our commitment to the third pillar of Twenty First Century Policing, technology and social media. As it will enhance our capability to provide real time information to officers and detectives enshrined in data driven crime fighting strategies and technology. Just Monday, we visited with the Montgomery County Police Department to learn about a relatively new technology. It's, the drone is a first responder program. This program, just as a real time information center, is intended to assist, not replace patrol officers with a resource to help mitigate crime and in some cases negate the need for patrol officers' response by placing eyes in the sky very shortly after a person calls nine one one for help. One of our key takeaways we learned from Montgomery County highlighted the importance of eventually hiring a professional civilian manager, a subject matter expert, well trained and experienced with oversight, research, evaluation and implementation of the ever evolving public safety crime fighting technology. Ultimately freeing up sworn officers and commanders to better serve residents, businesses and visitors. We look forward to our future conversations with the Pittman Administration, you and our community on yet another technology that would complement the capabilities of our real time information center. Vastly benefiting the community and keeping Anaroma County a safe place to live, work and raise your families. As you're aware, police departments throughout the United States have been adversely impacted by not only budgetary deficits, but staffing deficits. And we're grateful for the work Mr. Pittman's administration has performed to ensure balanced budget while providing much needed resources to help us accomplish our mission. We're looking forward to our conversations and collaborative work to address our historic staffing deficits. Building the Anaroma County Police Department our community deserves. In a staffing survey conducted in twenty twenty three by the Police Executive Research Forum, the data indicated that police agencies throughout the country are losing officers faster than can be hired. However, we remain committed to exploring opportunities through technology that will assist our department members with resources to support their overall success. Hope, hope is on the horizon as the survey indicated, hiring began trending upward from twenty twenty in twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two. And as of this year, year to date, we're seeing a slight trend upward in hiring as well. So again, hope is on the horizon. Our focus for FY twenty five is building out our real time information center to better assist our patrol officers and detectives with disrupting crime either prior to or when a crime is occurring, revolutionizing how we operate, mitigate and solve crimes. We'll be engaging you all in FY twenty six and twenty seven to grow our real time information center from a part time operation to a full time operation over the next three years. This is an exciting time for our county. This is an exciting time for our county and our department. As we embark upon this journey at the forefront of Twenty First Century Policing Technology. That will help us succeed as a community at reducing and solving crimes that in years past have gone unsolved. We thank you for your support, love and admiration of our men and women. And remain steadfast in our commitment to learn together, grow together, and lead together. We stand with Mr. Pittman and his administration, staying strong while growing strong. I'll now turn things over to Deputy Chief Katie Roberts, who'll provide some of our departmental highlights. And then following her remarks, our Fiscal Manager, Mr. Henry Farrell, will present our FY twenty five proposed budget. And we'd be happy to take your questions once we conclude. Thank you.
Good morning. So this slide you see up on the screen, it's just a small snapshot of just some of the work our Police Department did in twenty twenty three. I gave you a minute to look over it, but I wanted to specifically point out a few things. We answered over nine hundred thousand calls for service, which averaged twenty five hundred each day. Our officers attended over seven hundred community events throughout the county. And central records, our professional staff reviewed two hundred and fifty thousand police reports written by our officers. And they responded to over twenty two thousand PIA requests. And expunged thirty nine hundred records, all of which have strict legal timelines that they have to follow under the law. As for increases in crime in the county, robberies were up twenty one percent, burglaries were up twenty one percent, and vehicle thefts were up thirty two percent. This was a regional and a national trend that most police departments saw across the country. There were fourteen homicides, thirty one fatal vehicle collisions that resulted in thirty four deaths. Lastly, I just want to point out that in August twenty twenty three, the department went through the rigorous assessment process. To maintain the gold standard in public safety by COLIA, which stands for Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. The agency was one hundred percent compliant in all standards. And at the end of the assessment, the COLIA assessor said, Anarodun County, if not the best agency, we were the top five he's assessed in the nation. During his twenty year assessments career. The department has always believed that to be true, but to hear someone from outside the department recognize that. Only confirms that we truly are the best, and that is a tribute to the men and women in our agency. I'll now at this time turn it over to Mr. Henry Farrell.
Thank you. This next screen is a category breakdown of our budget. Police Department being the largest department in the county, has the largest budget, roughly two hundred eighteen million dollars. As you can see, almost ninety percent of that is going to personal services. The next biggest chunk is roughly nine percent into contractual services. And then the four remaining items, two percent or less in each one, so not a ton to talk about there. Page six, slide six. Um based on your guidance, which we received through the Budget Office. You didn't really want to talk about what's in the budget versus what is new and different. So this slide is kind of capturing what has changed. Um so let's talk about that. In personal services, you see almost a hundred and ninety two million dollars, a change of sixteen million. That is attributable to about thirteen million dollars for the pay package for the various unions and non reps. There's a three million dollar increase in the overtime budget. And there are some new positions. Off to the right. Think you might be able to see the new positions listed as professional staff. There are four full time merit positions and one contractual position to help outfit the real time information center. We also have one non rep position in the Evidence Collection Unit as a Senior Forensics Examiner. And there are four contractual positions in the Automated Traffic Enforcement Program. In addition, there's one sworn officer added to uh support the Automated Traffic Enforcement as well. Contractual Services at about nine percent, you can see at twenty point six million dollars. An increase of almost one million. Um there are some changes up and ups and downs in here. Um there is a two million dollar decrease in the amount of money going to the central service garage system. At the same time, there's a three million dollar increase to support the traffic enforcement vendor fees. Um other items in this program are radio maintenance and digital forensic software. Uh the supplies and materials, a decrease of forty four thousand dollars. Uh I'll talk about uh on the next screen of what makes up that roughly three point seven billion in supplies and materials. The next three very small portions are business and travel. At six hundred and fifty two thousand dollars, and that amounts to training in house and out. As well as books for recruits. Uh the capital outlay program has decreased substantially, you can see a decrease of one point two million dollars. As primarily removing the one time fees for the vehicles and equipment costs that were in for the new officers last year. Um what makes up that one point two are a license plate reader project, uh replacement of radios. And then various equipment for the new positions added in the the proposed budget. Granted contributions, no change at a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in this line pays for. Uh funneling subpoenas for film records and confidential expenses in the department. Um the next page. As as you can probably see, as you flip through, our budget book is twelve pages long. This is a snapshot of the comparative statement of expenditures on page two sixty nine. Um as I do each year, I'm going to attempt to make the twelve pages kind of painless by talking about it all here. Um I want to do that uh for a specific reason because. You know, the charter requires us to show you this budget and have it be presented by fund, by character, and object. So let's talk about the funds of in a thirty foot, uh thirty thousand foot flyover here. So you see the general fund at two hundred and eighteen million, I'll talk about that detail a little bit when we get to the bottom. There is no appropriation in the fast fund this year, revenues are a little bit low. And we have no fund balance in that account at this point, so we're going to forego expenditures in the upcoming year. There is a million dollar increase in grants, there is a tremendous variety of what's going on here. There are forty different grants at roughly four million dollars, so a lot of grant management happening. Uh and then the bitter video lottery terminal fund, a slight increase of two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. The next section is Character, also known as Bureau. In the Police Department, um very awkward to say the least and confusing to look at our budget by Bureau. The primary reason is because we take our personnel. And when we have, for example, an officer who resigns or retires out of patrol services and, for example, the Eastern District. When that officer retires, that position gets moved into the Training Academy for its upcoming recruits. That those positions shift all year long. Back and forth as recruits graduate and move from the academy to a patrol district and vice versa. Therefore making it very confusing to look at the budget by. Bureau or character. Here's where we get to the detail and the object lines. Uh we've already talked about sixteen million dollars in personal services. Again, that's about thirteen million dollars in pay packages, three million dollars in overtime and the new positions as outlined. Uh the contractual services at twenty one million dollars or an increase of forty three thousand. Uh seemingly a large number at at twenty million dollars, but really thirteen of that. Thirteen million dollars that goes to central services garage system for um fleet operations, any eventual replacement. Three million dollars goes to red light speed cameras. There's roughly a million dollars in there for mobile data computer, mobile access. And then a tremendous variety of hardware, software, and equipment maintenance items. Uh business and travel slightly increased at thirty five thousand, and that is um due to increased cost for training. Um the capital outlay items, again, you can see the decrease there, and as we already talked about. There were one time costs for vehicles removed from last year's budget. And again, no increase in the grants line. So that's kind of a summary of what's happening in the Police Department's budget, not a tremendous amount of change there. Um so at this point, I'd like to move on to the Capital Improvement Program, page eight. This can be found in your capital book. Up on page eighty four and is the new Northern District Police Station. Uh there are a large variety of reasons why we are moving forward with this project. We've talked about this numerous times, so I will spare you all those reasons. Um just to say that it's all these reasons are supported by DPW and the Administration. We were fortunate enough to get some study money in the current year and utilizing an architect have reviewed many options. We weren't sure if we were going to be able to build on the current property, whether we would have to acquire land. Uh whether we would have to rent space while construction was going on, if we built on the current land. And so um we, just to let you guys know, we did direct our architect. To review the possibility of renovating and adding on to the current building. It turns out to be a few million dollars more expensive to do that than it would be to re- to construct and demolish. So the next projects that I wanted to talk about are on page ten or slide ten. And just wanted to mention, there's no new money for these first two projects, but they are ongoing, underway, and on target. And just wanted to mention that we're still trying to wrap up the Police Training Academy with prior year funding. We started construction on a snare based training barn. We have a project, uh the Evidence and Forensic Science Unit that we have established a pre construction meeting. Um this is prior year funding as well, and you can see the four components of that building. And then lastly, on this slide is the Police Special Operations Facility. There is three hundred and ten thousand dollars in the FY twenty five proposed budget to wrap this project up. And um status of this project is that um construction bids are opening in July. The last project on our list to talk about on the next slide, page eleven, is the firing range. Uh in the proposed budget, there is twenty three point six million dollars for construction. We are currently designing and engineering this building with current year monies. Um it's turning out to be twenty handgun lanes and five rifle lanes. There's some some cost savings in doing that versus the original plan. Uh and so we appreciate your support on this project for all the reasons that you can see in blue there. Uh and this concludes our prepared remarks, so um thank you for your time and support. And we will attempt to answer any questions you have at this time.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you for that presentation. I see we've got a question from Ms. Hammer.
Um yes, good morning. Thank you. Wait, can y'all hear me?
We can.
Okay, um so. I see there's some restructuring and that a position is being moved out of Animal Control for the licensing and permits. Could you address that a little bit about what difference that's going to make in Animal Control operations and in the police operations?
Yeah, so there is going to be a reorganization, um which is going to be split into three different business units. It's going to be Enforcement, Operations, and then Licensing. Enforcement and Operations will still fall under the Police Department and still be at the building that's on Maxwell Frye. And then the Licensing will go down to inspections and permits.
Okay, and but I would assume. Inspect that the position, the the licensing inspections permit is still going to have to work closely with Animal Control in some ways. I mean, the the requests that may come in, so. That position is being moved out of Animal Control over to there. Totally understand that. Um given recent um shakeups at Animal Control, that's currently the. Su- manager, the supervisor of Animal Control position is vacant. And from what we're hearing, it looks like there is going to be um. A reduction in the number of volunteers who are going to be working there, which means there's could be less things. I'm concerned about the workload um at the. At the shelter to be um to be adequate um with that cut in a position. Um I know all of that's happened since the budget request, but. What is the the plan in place if we find that we no longer have the volunteers that we have depended on a great deal to to apply a lot of things? And now we're down a position for that I believe the position was called Assistant Kennel. Director, so.
Yeah, so Ms. Lynn Kelly right now is our Management Assistant, too, is the interim acting right now. And in addition to that, we have Captain Jeff Adams and Lieutenant Sarah Boff, which is in that chain of command. That's doing a lot of oversight right now while it's going through transition. They met with the staff down there to include the volunteers and the full time um employees. They've got a good game plan in place right now to continue with that operation. We have not heard from any of the volunteers that they're going to stop volunteering. I think they realize that they will put the animals first um for anything else that's going on down there. But if that were to happen, we would just seek out more volunteers, but that was news to us. And we've met with the employees down there and that has not been brought to our attention.
It it has been raised with the council from volunteers and from some staff. So it is a concern for us that I think that we all want to keep an eye on in the future to make sure that. Operations there do not go down and that the animals are able to get the full care they need. It's a. I don't think it's a sustainable model that we're going to just depend on having more volunteers or recruiting more volunteers to fill in the space. If you know, if we don't have current enough staff, but thank you.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning. How many non sworn classified employees do you have in the Police Department? Who work in the Animal Care and Control section of the Police Department?
So we've got one, two. Forty, we have forty positions and currently we have two vacancies.
Okay, and those employees, are they governed by a standards manual, a personnel manual? What is the actual sort of um. Standards that they have to meet? Are they like any other classified employee or do they have different classic uh requirements because they're in the Police Department?
And they have different classifications that they do fall under the Police Department.
Okay.
And are treated as Police Department employees.
Okay, so do they fall under both the Classified Employee Manual and the Police Department Employee Manual?
Correct.
Okay, and. With respect to the chain of command that's over there, what is the exact status of the chain of command? Vis a vis the head of Animal Care and Control? Who do they report to specifically? What's that chain of command above them?
Sure, so currently with Lynn Kelly being the interim administrator down at Animal Care and Control, it would go to Captain Jeff Adams. And Major Sarah Shiver, and then myself.
And then above you is the Chief, and then above you is the County Executive?
Above the county, above the Chief is the C A O and then the County Executive.
Okay, got it. Okay. There it is. Sorry, we didn't have your presentation in our folder. I'm just looking at it now, so I want to pull that up really quickly. Um I did have a question for you about the Northern Police Station. So the idea of um the new project that you're going to replace that. And I've been there and I've I've seen it, so I can empathize with that. But I guess my question would be, we recently replaced Eastern. Um and when we did, that was because that building was an old schoolhouse that had been used as a police department and it was very, very, very old, et cetera. Um obviously Northern's a little different. What is the criteria that you all use in determining whether a police facility that you have is or is not meeting the standards? I know you conducted and you you indicated it's not big enough for some of the locker rooms and some of the meeting places are not large enough, but. That's a significant outlay of money, so can you speak to that, sort of what your priorities are there? And do you have some sort of facilities management program that you're looking at that this fits into?
Yeah, so um what we did was engage with their study money. We engaged the architect to uh first of all, do some interviews uh with our department officials. And talk about um what type of resources we needed to house in the facility. How many people, what kind of shift they work, do they need a desk, do they just need to stand up and write a report? Um so. So this is an architect who um, focuses their efforts on public safety buildings around the nation. And so they're very astute at these types of projects to, to outfit you with a facility. Not only that you need now, but will fit your needs down the road a few years. And so um, that was the first step in engaging with what needs to be built. Or can we renovate and add on to slash repair what's there? Anecdotally, we know that we have sixteen detectives working out of fifteen stations. We have nine sergeants working in four desks. We have kitchens with no sinks in them. When it's cold outside, it's cold inside and also when it's hot, it's the same. We have closets we turned into offices. The building was added on to twice uh, since the seventies and it's in a very linear fashion. So it's extremely inefficient to communicate and coordinate uh, when you're talking about some of the things that go on in the law enforcement world. Um, so I mean, that's just a variety. I think I'm heading to an answer for your question. Anything more specific that you're looking for there?
Well, I guess the question that I ended with is, is there some sort of facilities master plan? I know the library does that, the school system does that. Do you all have a, a facilities master plan either for public safety as a whole or for the police department in specific? Where you say, look, this is the schedule that we want to see some of these buildings replaced. This is how we prioritize them. This is how they build into the capital program.
I can tell you that in the police department, the answer is no, we don't have a big master plan, but we don't have that many facilities either. So we're, we are looking at our police stations primarily. Most of the other substations are um, leased space. And so um, that might be more of a DPW question as to if there was a master plan for facilities. But um, we do know that um, forthcoming are some renovations to the southern and western districts, but not replacements.
Okay, thank you on that.
You are.
I have another question, Madam Chair, if nobody else has questions.
I don't see any other flags. Go ahead.
Okay, can we, I, I don't have a copy of your PowerPoint presentation. I don't think that was ever sent to us, so I can't tell you which page it was on. But can you pull back up your PowerPoint presentation um, when you were in the operating side? And when you were looking at the sort of twelve pages in one page that you had there? No, it wasn't this one. I'm sorry. Can you go one page previously? Let's see if maybe that was in. Yes, this was it. Okay. Uh, so the personnel service or personal services, I see the countywide pay packages. The overtime two point nine million, is that you all similar to what the fire department is doing? Trying to quote unquote, right-size the overtime budget, understanding what you need?
I, I think that's fair to say that um, our expenditures are roughly the same projected next year as they are this year. We just have been, in our opinion, underfunded in that overtime line item. And so, yeah, I think that's the right way to say this right sizes the appropriation for our operations.
Yep, because I'm still remembering the transfer bill that I think put something like six million dollars back into the police department because of overtime and, and other expenses. So do you think that this infusion of funds will avoid those transfer bills in the future?
Yes, sir. That's our hope.
Okay, great. On the contractual services with the traffic enforcement vendor fee of three million dollars, is that the speed camera program?
That would be red light and speed cameras, yes.
And so at this moment, do, where are we in terms of that program? How many red light cameras are operational? How many speed cameras are operational in the county?
So I believe that I'd be accurate in saying there are no cameras functioning at this time. But I do believe that sometime between September and November, our goal is to have ten red light cameras and forty speed cameras spaced out throughout the county.
So that's going to be a significant rollout and that cost is covered by the three million dollars?
That's correct, so. There, there's no real initial cost to the cameras that's absorbed by the vendor. They're, they'll be doing the installation and providing the hardware, software. The fees come in, in a, on a per citation basis uh, after they get their construction done. And we go through our testing period. There's also a, like a two-week period of sending out warnings instead of sending out actual violations. So kind of an introductory period, if you will.
Okay, and how much do you anticipate is going to be generated with revenue on this?
So right now, I believe we, the budget office has plugged in a five point five million dollar revenue number. On um, so you know, five point five on top of the three million that it's going to cost us to pay the vendor.
And so with the three million that you're paying the vendor, if you're rolling these out at some point between September and December, is that reflective of an annualized cost through the entire budget year? Or is that a half-year cost and then next year you'll anticipate needing another three million to run this at a six million dollar cost for the whole year?
Yeah, that's a great question as this is kind of a new program. I think the budget office has looked at Montgomery County as a whole, the number of cameras they have because we're piggybacking off of a contract they have with the vendor. And they've kind of prorated that for the guestimate, if you will, of when the cameras are going to go live. So at the same time, we may need more than three million next year. We'll also have more than five point five in revenue. So uh, they will offset each other.
Okay, understood. And then I guess this is just sort of a higher level question. I'm confused about this presentation says, I, I've noticed that we were looking, it was the FY twenty-three supplemental budget request. But then in the title of it, it says FY twenty-five. It, just making sure, this is for this year what you guys are asking for?
Yes, that's just a, a file name problem, that's all.
Okay, got it. All right, that's, I just want to make sure I wasn't missing something or we were in the wrong year, so just want to make sure. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I was just curious if you had um, a number that you could provide of your vacancies in your sworn officers?
Yes, um, as of earlier this week, we had forty-three sworn. Is that still right?
That's correct.
And roughly thirty-two-ish civilian vacancies. Most, most of those fall in the nine-one-one center.
Me, I'm sorry, I was on mute. Um, meaning the civilian vacancies mainly fall in the nine-one-one center?
Most though, but not all of, yes.
Okay. All right, um, and, and sorry, I didn't have my um, typing, my place where I have my notes open. Could you say those numbers one more time?
Sure, it was forty-three sworn and thirty-two civilian.
Thank you very much.
Do we have any more questions for?
Madam Chair, that's a good, Sir Smith, sorry about the, the camera issue here.
No problem.
If, can you also, uh, if, if you all can speak to the, um, not the red light cameras, but sort of community or safety cameras? Uh, is there any intent in this budget to identify and or procure uh, a, a number of community cameras that could go towards hotspot areas uh, that will feed back into the uh, Arctic?
So I, I think that, so number one, we do have a license plate reader project funded in this year's budget in the capital outlay object. In addition to, we have some money funded in the video lottery terminal fund to purchase core devices to go out to businesses and share their security cameras with us. I think we're finding that bang for your buck, that's a big hit for us uh, in solving crimes. And so um, I think that may be all we have with respect to um, camera work going on in this proposed budget.
Do you know, what is the cost to do an installation for, um, I guess, a, a community, well, I guess a red light cam would be similar in cost. What does it, what does that look like for an installation?
Community, I'm sorry.
For the core camera device?
No, I'm, I'm talking specifically for, there are some communities uh, that I would like to have uh, uh, community safety cameras uh, or at least one put up that can help put eyes on those areas when police are not there. Uh, that can help uh, deter and or respond quick or rapidly uh, to some of the issues that are in those, those communities.
Uh, sir, I do believe the cost per core device is two hundred and fifty dollars per core device. Is that correct? Of the, but you're speaking specifically to CCTV cameras in that community.
Yeah, like a CCTV, uh, CCTV camera, but specifically in uh, hotspot uh, areas. Is, is what I'm going to be focused on.
Yeah, I'd see as, as Arctic grows, we're hoping that the budget funding and that goes also because we're still working on our budget for the C C T program for the police department, which has managed, you know, we, the traffic cameras and all the cameras we have out there right now. So that is something when Arctic grows that we would like to see grow as well. So yes, but right now we are depending a lot on those core devices. We're very pleasantly surprised with how many people, businesses volunteered to give us this access to their surveillance cameras. Um, we're up to over four hundred cameras that we have access to now, so we're getting some really good coverage. And now with the lottery money, we'll be able to explore putting more out there. But no one has turned us down when we've gone out there to ask if we could tap into their surveillance cameras. They've given us full access to them.
Right, right. This is more for the, the communities where the businesses aren't facing in those, those areas uh, that have uh, prolonged activities uh, that occur on a regular basis. So I wanted to make sure we had uh, some sort of eyes established in, in, in those hotspot. Even if it's one or two that we start off with uh, uh, in the, in the near future, just to start that process. But I think what I'm hearing from you all is the emphasis uh, being on the um, um, the, the community, the, the business cameras and then the red light cameras. And you're kind of growing from there. That, that's what it sounds like.
Correct. It's going to be in stages. As Arctic grows, we're hoping that the camera coverage we have in the county will also grow.
We got it. But that's all I have, Madam Chair. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you. Um, I recently learned about a practice um, that is happening in um, other police departments in Maryland. And I was curious to find out if this is happening in Anarundel County. So um, you know, as you know, um, because, you know, of the recruiting challenges that are facing police departments everywhere. Lots of police departments are offer, offering signing bonuses. But with those signing bonuses come a commitment to serve for a period of time. And um, what I'm hearing is that there are situations where an officer has accepted that signing bonus. But then before they have um, met their commitment to serve for a period of time, they are applying to a different police department and accepting a new signing bonus. And that new department is paying off the amount that is owed on their previous employer's bonus. So I'm curious um, if you have run into that with um, officers who are leaving the county? And if that is a practice that Anarundel County Police Department um, has for uh, I guess lateral transfers from other police departments?
Yeah, so we do stagger it. We don't give the money all upfront. So we went from twenty thousand dollar signing bonus to a ten thousand dollars, starting with our hundred and second recruit class, which will be the end of this year. So how that would look is for a recruit officer, they would get the one thousand dollars once they're hired. They would get another four thousand dollars at the completion of the academy. And after they're doing one more year, they would get the other five thousand, which would give them the ten thousand. So then hopefully after one year, we try to look at it as not just a hiring incentive, but also a retention. But we don't want to give everything upfront, just to what you said. But we also want to keep them in that after a year, they're going to be like, okay, we like it here and they're going to stay. So we kind of play around with that. We do it with the laterals as well. They'll be receiving a ten thousand dollar bonus continuous also. Um, and they are kind of paid out in a similar same way.
And Madam Rodvian, we're not seeing, we're not seeing a volume of our officers leaving us to go lateral to other departments. It's the other way around.
Great to hear.
And I, I don't know that we have, I've not experienced it or heard of it, where we are buying others out of their um, contractual obligation with their previous organization. I have not heard of that.
Okay, that is also great to hear. I have heard that other jurisdictions are doing that. They're buying out, um, you know, uh, lateral officers out of their um, signing bonus commitment. So I just wanted to, you know, I, I feel like the taxpayers ought to know if that is happening in Anarundel County and I'm glad to hear that it is not. So thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see any further questions for the police department at this time. Thank you for your presentation and your service every day to Anarundel County.
Thank you all very much.
We will move along this morning. Next on our list, I believe, is the sheriff's office. We'll let everybody transition and Kyle, you're a budget analyst for the sheriff's department?
Yep, I was giving it a second until I see them. I haven't seen them yet. S H Will, is that it? Good morning, I'm Kyle Madden with the Budget Office. I was the budget analyst for the sheriff's office. Um, you can find their budget on page three fifteen of your budget book. And I will turn it over to the sheriff.
We're here.
Good morning.
Good morning. How is everybody?
Fantastic.
Would you like me to share my screen for the presentation or do you guys have it set up?
Uh, what are we going to do, James? Do I own the screen? Just one second. I have a little uh, technical issue. Can you see it now?
No.
Okay.
I can share mine if you'd like.
All right, go ahead. That's fine.
All right, we'll do it.
All right, so let me go ahead and begin. Let me, let you know who's here with me. I have from my Bureau of Administration, my assistant um, commander, Lieutenant Her with me. I have from Finance, Mary Bell. And then my uh, Chief Deputy James Williams is paying, doing double duty today. He's also working the tech stuff. So our FY twenty-five proposed budget, let me just say last year's budget, we really appreciated. And, and to conserve time, I'm going to go through this pretty quickly because it's not a whole bunch of things that we want. But I will talk about some of the, uh, few of the big items that we need. Our mission statement and our values, which is on the next page, has not changed since we began. We continue to strive to be modern, effective, efficient, and transparent. Um, our organizational chart, the next page is pretty much the same, except from last year's budget. We was able to create the Office of Professional Compliance, which is off to the right at the top. And underneath of that, we installed body worn cameras, which we feel as though should be underneath uh, professional compliance. And then we also have internal affairs there. A little further down underneath Field Support Division on the right-hand side, you see we now have document control and communications and that is now under the Bureau of Administration. We moved, moved that from Bureau of Operations because we just felt as though we could be more effective and it was more efficient and it should be in Bureau of Administration. Our next chart, FY twenty-four highlights, you already know, we got uh, two new captains. We have fourteen new vehicles. Those vehicles, we have not seen the first one yet, but they are coming in hopefully by the end of this year. And the formation of the Full-Time Office of Professional Compliance. And the next budget, as you see, the budget-wise, we are the smallest, uh, we have the smallest budget in public safety. Now, let me say this, with that small budget, we are still trying to save money for the county. There are a lot of things that we do um, that may go unnoticed, but we're trying our best to save money for the county. But we still need additional funding, if that makes sense to you guys. Next page. We have been aggressively recruiting. Our current vacancies, as you see, we're at seventeen uh, sworn vacancies. That's a twenty percent vacancy rate and three civilian vacancies. Now, we've probably brought on about thirteen to fourteen sworn people since, since I've been here, since my administration has been in place. But at the same time, we're losing people. We have lost at least one to the county police and that's probably for pay. We've lost some to other agencies, again for pay. We've lost some to other agencies, again for pay. And uh some to retirement. Um, we're probably going to, we got one more person that we're waiting to see how their injuries uh turn out, to see if they can come back to work. So it's 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 just the natural process of people leaving, but we are actively recruiting. Now, our civilian vacancies, we've been able to do a lot better, um, filling those. These current vacancies that we have are pretty much due to promotions. We created uh new promotional opportunities, these, they took advantage of them, so we have some vacancies that we're filling. Um, I am very happy and uh excited about the county police. They're the highest paid agency now in the state of Maryland. That is great. But what also happens, it increases the the gap between us and the county police. And when we recruit and try to put uh cadets in the academy, they're sitting next to their brothers and sisters in the blue, and there's such a big disparity disparity in the uh pay. So it makes us hard to retain these individuals, or even say, hey, let's go in this academy. You're going to sit beside these people, we're going to be making much more, but we want you to stay with us. So we need to keep that in mind. The next page. With the with the unfortunate killing of Judge Wilkinson, um, we had to change how we operate here in the courthouse. Um, I I talked to Judge Schaefer, and she demanded, and a little further along, you'll see there's a letter that she presented to us that we staff every courtroom with a deputy. Um, meeting that demand has been very difficult for us, but um we have been able to do it. Uh, the next page. So from twenty-three to twenty-four, and you see the different months, um, you'll see the percentage increase. So January, um, where we had thirteen deputies, now January of this year, um, courts, I'm sorry, uh thirteen courtrooms we had to fill. Now we got twenty-six courtrooms, so it's a hundred percent increase, and you can see down the list. Now, we're able to do this because we're changing schedules, we're utilizing overtime, and we're putting command officials in courtrooms. We're also putting command officials on front doors. Um, we are making it work and being mindful of our budget. As I I told all of my staff, um, going over our budget is not an option for us here. We will stay within our budget. I also have a meeting scheduled with Judge Schaefer next week because it's been brought to my attention that starting June first, a lot of uh court hearings that were done um remotely are now going to be brought back into the courthouse. That will make it very difficult for us to maintain this model of having a deputy in every courtroom. I'm going to try my best to work with her so she can keep these court hearings still done remotely. But if we can't come to some type of agreement for us to keep a deputy in every courtroom will not be sustainable. But there is also a push that you should be aware of in the State House to make it law that every deputy occupy, a deputy is occupied in every courtroom, situated in every courtroom. Uh, the next page. With the demands of the courtroom upon us, you know, there is places that we suffer. And right now it's a warrant served. As you can see, uh FY twenty-three and twenty-four, the actual number of warrants served is down. They're down, the unserved warrants, of course, are going up. Uh, court orders received and and uh civil process received, we're still trying to stay on top of that. It's a balancing act for us, but we're doing it. Our uh civil squads, we try to keep us fully staffed, and we try to keep them out of the rotation from coming from field operations and filling in at the courthouse. As you know, civil subpoenas, evictions, all of that stuff, it has to be served, and it has to be served in a timely manner. The only thing that doesn't have an expiration date is the warrants. Now, taking into consideration that you know, warrants are still critical, we do have an alternate plan for that, but let's go to the next page. One of the things that we're looking at to to fill this void in the courtroom is bringing on part-time contractual employees. Um, they're going to be certified by Maryland State Police as special police officers in order to provide armed security at key entry points, and we also want to put them in civil courtrooms. Civil courtrooms are less likely to have any type of a disturbance in them. But if a judge uh says there's a possibility of a disturbance, he did a testimony or anything like that, then we'll probably put another sworn deputy in there. But with these fifteen hundred hour employees, these contractual employees, they will definitely save us on money. And the recruitment time, as far as like the training and stuff, will be cut significantly. Right now, it takes nine months for somebody to go through their academy. Um, if we get a fifteen hundred hour employee to put in to plug in at the door, you know, it will be much better for us because we can take sworn people off the doors and put them in courtrooms or put them in other places. We won't have to keep pulling people from our warrant squads to come over and fill the void also. Now, we asked for, I think it's uh nine of these positions, we currently have three. If you go to the next page. Uh, we're out of sync here. Okay, I have a page you don't have, but I'll I'll just say this. Um, we currently have three employees, con uh contractual employees that we have already, we're putting through the process for the training. Um, they will be certified special police officers that we can utilize. We're asking for nine additional uh contractual positions to help fill the these vacancies. The nine that we asked for, we're asking for a minimum. The more that you can give us, if you can give us one more, two more, three more, that will only help us in the end. That will allow, like I said, these deputies to remain out on the road, or these deputies to remain in the the criminal uh court cases to to free up the deputies. So whatever you can give us will be greatly appreciated. And I think we're going to go to the next page now. So taking into consideration that warrants are a priority for us. We've developed a plan to tackle some of the more serious warrants. Um, we have people sitting out there with arrest warrants for homicides, for robberies, rapes, uh violent crimes against people. A prime example would be if a homicide occurred and the county police knew where the suspect was, and they had a warrant for that person, they would execute the warrant. They're not going to send two police officers to go execute the warrant for homicide suspect. They're going to send their SWAT team because of the 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 uh level or or possibility of violence occurring. Well, we have these people out here with these uh warrants for violent crimes, but it's expected that we just send a deputy in a regular uniform and a regular vehicle. Now, we're not, I don't want to create a SWAT team, that's not what I'm saying. But what I am saying is when we go after these individuals, we're going to target them. We're going to go after them to get them off the streets. But our people need to be properly trained and they need to be properly outfitted to uh take on these um, take on these uh people, these violent people with open warrants. So as you see, there are a number of things that we're looking for. Ballistic vests, ballistic helmets, uh communication headsets, uniforms for our members because we want them properly identified. We want them to be able to have all the necessary equipment that they need on their uniform to go after these uh individuals. Now, I am not creating a full-time unit. As you see, it's called the uh Violent Criminal Apprehension Team. It will consist of about fifteen uh sworn deputies and two civilian personnel. The two civilian personnel will be responsible for doing the research on these individuals. So we'll do a deep dive into their history, to their whereabouts, to their relationships, to determine where they are. And even prior to going out to execute an arrest warrant, we're going to make sure that they're in a a specific location. Um, we're going to get their uh uh travel habits because we want to take them down in a a place that's less likely to cause any type of um um, I guess, problems. So we're going to do our best to identify where they are before we actually go out and spend taxpayers' money. So once we identify a a person, then we will send a team out. This will probably be done with overtime expenditures because I cannot afford to take fifteen people from a regular schedule and go after somebody with an open warrant. So this will probably be done with overtime expenditures. The number of times that this team will be utilized throughout the course of a year are a lot less than my uh regular warrant squads going out and looking for people on a daily basis. This is something that's needed. Um, and again, funding for it is ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars. We're trying to keep it as low as possible, you know, but the more that you can give us will be greatly appreciated. Next page. External complaint advocate. Now, this is a required position through the uh new uh um police oversight. Um, let me tell you about it. Complaints deserve transparency and change to be heard when making, and a chance to be heard when making complaints against the Anarundel County Sheriff's deputies. Part-time contractual position, this position is required by law, like I said. It will provide professional support to anyone who files a complaint against a deputy, offer information, resources, and provide updates on the complaint process. This is a position that I've already uh talked to uh people about. I already have interest in it. We're in a position to make a move on um a person that is currently uh working with the Philadelphia Police Department. Um, they reside here in Anarundel County, and they're looking to make a change. So we are ahead right now. Um, but again, this is a position that's required by law. And I'm open to any questions that you may have.
Ms. Rodbien.
Yes.
Thank you. So um you had mentioned that um, you know, a recruit, a maybe more of a retention issue, but also possibly a recruiting issue is um the salaries compared, the salaries and the the starting salary in the sheriff's office compared to starting salaries in the police office. What is the current starting salary um in the sheriff's office?
Well, they just got, it was a seven percent raise, so I'm not, you know, sure where the starting salary was, which we excuse me. Yeah, um, not sure where it is, but it was in the low sixties, so you add seventy percent on top of that, or actually high fifties, I'm sorry. We do a lot of hiring of uh laterals from other agencies. We don't get many new recruits. New recruits, they tend to go with the higher salary. We can supplement a lateral who retires from another agency with the salary that we have here. But I'm trying to think, we're just seven percent on top of like the fifty-eight thousand, I think the starting salary was. But now that they're at seventy thousand, it's hard for us to uh get new recruits and put them in through an academy when they're sitting next to their brothers and sisters who would make them significantly more.
Okay, my um my math says uh fifty-eight thousand um with seven percent on top of that would be sixty-two thousand. Um, just on my, you know, well, I won't say back of napkin, on my uh laptop calculator calculation. Um, okay, so I'll, I'm just going to make a note of that. And then um this is something I ask a police department too, and I believe that, you know, you and I had actually talked about this. Um, that there has been a practice where um law enforcement agencies are sort of paying off um any amount on a bonus that is um owed to another law enforcement agency, any signing bonus that may have been owed um to a another law enforcement agency. First off, um, does Anarundel County Sheriff's Department engage in that practice? I I for just really feel like the taxpayers ought to know if um, you know, if that's something that our our um, you know, our departments are using as a recruiting incentive.
No, we 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 got a fourteen million dollar budget, but we can't pay anybody.
Okay, okay. And then just one thing, um, one final question, and then I will turn it over. I can see Councilman Boki also is waiting for questions. Um, you mentioned some items, and I just want to make sure that I'm clear. You know, I would love to look to see if we can, you know, um, offer funding to cover some of those additional items. But I want to make sure I know what's already included in the county executive's budget and what's not included in the county executive's budget. So if you wouldn't mind just shooting an email to our um auditor and letting us know the items that are not currently included. So if we are able to fund them, we, you know, we know exactly what it is that we're we're funding and and what exactly it is that you need. That would just be helpful to just have that one hundred percent clear.
Okay.
Thank you very much, and that's all I got for you.
Mr. Boki.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sheriff?
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm going to ask you about the courthouse.
Okay.
That seems to be a big piece of this. Um, on that slide number eight, page eight of your proposed budget presentation, it shows that you're staffing uh anywhere between twenty-six and twenty, or twenty-five and twenty-nine courtrooms. Can you break that down for me? Do you mean that's how many court sessions? Or are you saying that simultaneously you're staffing twenty-five different courtrooms in a courthouse that has fourteen judges? Because I know you have the magistrates, so I get that's in there. I get there's retired judges. So by my math, I could get you guys up to maybe twenty-one, but I'm not quite following where the twenty-five number or even the twenty-nine number comes in.
So that's, that will be twenty-five courtrooms uh per day. So morning, afternoon, if, you know, a judge uh leaves a courtroom to come back, then we're counting uh two courtrooms.
Okay, so this is, this is court sessions, not actually courtrooms.
Well, court sessions, okay, yes.
Okay, that that's just what I want to make sure, because I'm trying to think, I can't imagine you having twenty-five to twenty-nine court hearings happening simultaneously. That's what I'm asking.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Um, you indicated that you may, and this is something you and I had talked about, we met previously, about trying to put some of the um special police officers in the courtrooms. Have you discussed that concept with the Circuit Court?
This, yes, yes, we have.
Okay, because because I had a conversation with some folks in the Circuit Court separately, and it sounded like the preference would be to have sheriff deputies in all the courtrooms and then the special police at the front door as opposed to having sheriff's deputies at the front door and then special police in some of the courtrooms. So I just wasn't sure, I wanted to make sure that the the lines of communication between your office and the Circuit Court were all aligned on whatever the budget request is.
Well, I I I say this, you know, we're responsible for the security of the courthouse, the courtrooms. So we will do what we feel is appropriate, and we will definitely take into consideration safety. But anybody we bring in this fifteen hundred hour position will be properly trained and will have the proper oversight supervision.
Okay. Um, I am curious about the District Court for a second. You do not obviously have any authority over the District Court, that's not really in your purview, am I right on that?
That is correct.
Okay, and they have bailiffs there in that District Courthouse, right?
Correct.
Okay, and they deal with a lot of issues that are similar to the Circuit Court specifically. They handle the majority of protective orders, they handle evictions, they handle tenants holding over wrongful detainer, a lot of these very contentious issues, as well as, you know, some other civil matters. Um, do they have armed security there in the courthouse?
Yes, they do.
Okay, and do they have an armed security officer or police officer, or a special officer, I'm not sure what the title is, in every single courtroom?
Um, I can say this, no. And the reason being, I say that because I was actually in the courtroom not too long ago, and I was the only armed, I was the only officer in there, so.
Right, yeah, my my understanding is usually it's a bailiff, and then they have some armed folks, I think, at the door. Um.
Now, I I say that because I I did not see anybody, and it was done remotely.
Okay.
The defendant was not actually in there.
Got you. I guess the reason I'm asking this is I'm just trying to make sure, because obviously those are challenging contentious hearings at the District Court. I think the justification for bringing in this level of security in the Circuit Court is these are very contentious, difficult cases. And so I'm trying to see how are we handling this in other contexts already? So, I don't know if that's as much a question, that last part, as it is a comment, that maybe we should all be considering that too.
Well, I will, I will say this, you know, um, when I first took over, I was not aware that we did not have a deputy in every courtroom, you know? Um, and as soon as we possibly could take care of that, we did put a deputy in every courtroom. But it, it really stretches our, our uh, our personnel really thin here when we do that. But it's something we'll, we'll continue as long as we have to, for.
I, I, I can see it stretches your personnel. I see personnel I've never seen before in certain parts of the courthouse who have historically been on warrant teams out, you know, on the road. And now you unfortunately have to drag them in and they're sitting in the courthouse. So I, I see how it stretches you. And obviously, the numbers bear that out with that graph you showed on page nine of your presentation, with the increase in the number of outstanding warrants and the decrease in the number of served warrants. So we, we, we see that. I guess that's where I'm trying to look at this and try to find out, is what we're doing solving a problem, right? By, by reallocating your staffing this way? Are we solving a problem? Or are we um, trying to find a solution for a problem that uh, is tragic and extraordinary and not something that we see on the regular? I mean, you mentioned the tragedy of what happened with Judge Wilkinson, and obviously no one wants to see that repeated. The question is, there's probabilities and there's, you know, how you deal with them and what are the likelihood of those things? And what other uh, avenues exist for you and your staff on site to be able to try to control some of that? I was in the other day, some guy brought in a knife, your guys immediately saw it, he didn't even mean to do it. But then he got irritated that he couldn't take his knife and he threw it across the floor, and your guys immediately shut it down and they handled it. So I just give kudos to you, because I think your staff does already an excellent job of really trying to, to take care of some of the security threats on the front end, so they don't wind up being security threats on the back end, if that makes sense. So I, I give kudos to you for that.
Well, let me, let me just say this also. You know, we're, we're, we're taking resources from one place to fill a void here. But I also understand with these warrant squads, I want to do something about that on that end. You know, we need to go after these violent people. You know, these violent people are just sitting out there, and they've been sitting out there for months and sometimes years, and nobody's looking for them. We'll continue to look for the, the regular warrants throughout today with my, my two uh, two-person uh, squads and stuff like that. But we have got to start tackling these more violent criminals that are out there. And that's one of the reasons why I want to start this VCAT unit. You know, at least we can say, hey, we know this person has an open warrant for a robbery. He's committed several robberies, got a warrant, we need to go after that person. So I'm, I'm taking care of stuff here in the courthouse, but we also gotta tackle the more serious things out there on the street.
Yep, totally get it, thank you.
Do we have any further questions for uh, the Sheriff's Office at this time? Uh, I'm not, I'm not sure. I think Ms. Rodvian asked if, what of your request, it went unfunded in the county executive's budget? Is that, did you, did we get that answer? We, are you coming before us today to supplement the county executive's budget in some way? Was that the ninety-nine thousand?
That's the, that is, that is. That, that is the VCAT, that is the ninety-nine thousand.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
And like I said um, earlier, you know, we were asking for things. The more would be the better. As you notice, our last year's budget, we asked for a number of vehicles. This year, we're keeping it pretty slim, because we understand, you know, we're trying to be fiscally responsible. We do a lot of things here that actually try to save money. But whatever else you can give us in the funding part of it, would be great and appreciated.
Great. Do we have, Ms. Rodvian, were you, are you good?
I'll, I'll ask another time.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
But, well, I don't see any further questions. Um, I'll give my colleagues just a, a couple seconds here to shout out. But it seems like um, we have gone through the questions. So I really appreciate you coming before us this morning, and thank you for all you and your team do every day for Anaronda County.
All right, thank you.
We will move forward with uh, the Department of Detention, Mr. Chris Klein, I believe, I saw him earlier. Good morning, sir. We'll let your team pop up on the screen, and you've got the floor.
Good morning, uh, Council, this is Bo Zao from the Budget Office. I'm the Budget Analyst for the Department Detention Facilities. Their FY uh, twenty-five budget can be found on page two hundred and eighty-eight of the Proposed Budget Book. With that, I'm gonna turn to um, Chris for his presentation.
Okay, uh, good morning, thank you, Bo. Um, Pat, can you bring up our slides? All right. All right, can everyone see that? Yep, okay, thank you, Lisa. Um, so, good morning, um, I'm Christopher Klein, Superintendent for the Department of Detention Facilities. Um, I'm honored to appear before you today to present our FY twenty-five operating and capital budget for the Department of Detention Facilities. I'd first like to begin by introducing my executive staff who are with me today. Um, Correctional Facility Administrator Michael Borjazza, and then uh, Director of Business Services Patricia Moore. I, I personally want to thank them for their continued hard work and dedication to the department. Um, I know this year's planning was extremely challenging, especially with some rising vendor costs that we saw um, with some of our contractual partners. Um, unable to be here with us today is Correctional Facility Administrator John Kelson. He's currently deployed to Poland with the military, and I just want to recognize him and thank him for his service to our, our country and state as well as our department. Um, handing out the recognitions, uh, also, I'd like to thank Bo, our analyst, um, for all of his guidance and support and hard work that he's put into our budget process. Uh, it's really refreshing to have an analyst that takes the time to understand our business. Um, and he asks thoughtful questions and challenging questions to make sure that we're being fiscally responsible. And additionally, want to thank those council members that um, came out to our department facilities this past year to see the great work that our team um, is, is doing for our, for our county. So on behalf of the Department of Detention Facilities, I'd like to thank the County Council for their continued support as we strive to fulfill our mission to provide for public safety through the confinement of pre-trial detainees and convicted offenders in safe and secure facilities, while monitoring alternatives to incarceration and preparing inmates for community reentry. In preparation for this year's budget, we focused on staying the course um, and submitting a budget that addresses the needs of our department and sustains the improvements and processes that we have implemented. Um, with that in mind, our budget request focused on the areas of maintaining safe operations, secure facilities, and providing essential offender programs and services. So this next slide here cap- um, captures some of our major accomplishments for FY twenty-four. First, I'd like to begin, um, just to highlight a couple of them. Um, one is that our department has now been successfully audited and is now pre-acertified. That's the Prison Rape Elimination Act. We are one of only three local jurisdictions in the state to achieve this certification. This really speaks to our commitment to maintaining a culture of zero tolerance when it comes to sexual violence and prison rape within our system. Second, I'd like to highlight that both of our facilities were successfully audited by the Maryland Commission on Correctional Standards and found to be in compliance. And then last, we made significant progress with our staffing deficit and hired fifty detention officers during the course of the entire calendar year, which also allowed for us to do numerous promotions within the system as well. While we're still in the process of scheduling those individuals for their required academy training, they've been the much-needed relief necessary to continue to maintain safe and secure facilities. I want to thank our union leadership for continuing to trust in the process changes that we have made to see these positive results. Um, for this next slide, for FY twenty-five, I'd like to hi- highlight three specific objectives. First, uh, continuing to improve on the vacancy rates for the department. As I just stated, the challenge of hiring staff for the department continues to be a top priority. While our department is coming off one of the most successful hiring years in our history with the fifty detention officers and achieving a nine percent vacancy rate as opposed to the eighteen percent vacancy rate we were at last year, we still need to strategize and invest in this initiative. We simply cannot afford to find ourselves in the position we were out coming out of the pandemic. Second, I'd like to highlight uh, leveraging technology, specifically utilizing the Power DMS system for our policy procedure management, which should improve efficiency, accountability, and distribution of policies throughout the department. Our policies and procedures are the backbone of everything we do. And not only do we rely on them for operations, but they're also required for accreditation with the NCCHC, MCCS, and now PRIA. Phase two of this project should allow us to utilize this platform to expand in areas of training development as well as field training down the road. Third, um, successfully transitioning to the new medical vendor contracts. Um, our current medical vendor contract expired on March thirty-first, and we've been working in the first two months of a transition to a new medical and pharmaceutical vendor. I want to thank the purchasing group, the CAO, Chris Trumbauer, Stephen Terrell, and the Budget Office for their efforts during the RFP process. We're hopeful that this vendor provides the quality of service that accurately addresses the needs of our population, specifically in the areas of mental health and substance use disorder. Our mental health population continues to grow, and the backlog of individuals awaiting hospitalization at the state level continues to get longer. As we've just passed the one-year mark for fully implementing House Bill one-one-six related to medication-assisted treatment, we are excited to finally have these requirements as part of our contract and are already expanding the programs for SUD. Slide six here, this slide represents our requested staffing reclassifications for FY twenty-five. Our request is to increase the classification grades for our correctional records clerks and our booking officers from an OS, which is an Office Support seven position, to an OS Support nine position, and our correctional records clerk two and senior booking officers from an OS nine to an OS ten. So just for context, we have a thirty-one percent vacancy rate for our booking officers and the constant turnover in our records unit, which out of twelve staff have fifty percent of that staff with one year or less um, training on the job. While the both classifications are a little bit different, they're very similar in the technical work that they do. The amount of training that is needed and their daily interactions they have with various law enforcement agencies, courts, judges, lawyers, need to, um, this change needs to address the disparities in pay. The salary increase will help us with attracting, recruiting, and retaining these critical positions for the department. This request has taken a backseat over the past two years as we've had greater needs with our detention officer staff. However, we can no longer wait and must act. A system without these highly-trained staff would have us in violation of the Constitution, state, and federal laws, and put the public at risk. This slide here represents a snapshot of our budget. Um, so sixty-three million, um, and then the recommended adjustments for FY twenty-four, which are the basis of our FY twenty-five budget of just over sixty-nine million dollars. Um, this is roughly a twelve percent increase, um, and most of this increase is solely attributed to our medical contract and increases with our food vendors. The next floors, excuse me, the next four slides are just a breakdown of our budget by the separate budget unit locations. Here we have Jennifer Road, which is our intake, pre-trial, and maximum security facility. The breakdown for the budget is thirty-six point four-one million. Again, the increases um, for this facility location are, again, attributed to medical and food costs. Um, Ordinance Road Correctional Center, which has a majority of our sentence population, as well as our weekender program, and our house arrest has a budget of twenty-one point one-five million. Again, this facility focuses on our programming, as well as will be the site of our future reentry hub. Slide ten for administration, the budget is six point four-nine million. Um, here we have some increases with contractual services and material supplies. And then our Central Holding Processing Center um, has a budget of four point one million dollars. This unit, again, uh, continues to process over six thousand intakes per year in an efficient manner, which allows direct access to the commissioners, as well as expedites the return of police officers back into the community. For our FY twenty-five capital budget, um, this consists of four projects. Only two of these projects, though, have funding that need approval. Um, so I'll cover those two first. Um, first project is funding two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for detention center renovations. It's with this funding that we continue to maintain both of our facilities to assure that they're safe, secure, and adhere to applicable standards for accreditation. It's with this funding that we expect to replace flooring at Jennifer Road, redo showers at Ordinance Road, and continue to maintain the fencing, painting, as well as other prioritized facility improvements. Our second project um, is for the Central Holding Processing Center parking. Um, it looks like an additional two hundred and eight thousand dollars are needed for this project. This is in addition to the two million that was previously approved for the fifty-plus parking spaces across from the Westonapolis Fire Station on Jennifer Road. Um, it's my understanding that the project design is at ninety percent, and the current schedule for the bid advertisement was this month in May, with construction expected to begin this August um, coming up. Um, as far as the other projects, the security system project actually came in nineteen thousand dollars less, so that money will be liquidated. Um, again, that project benefited both staff and inmates for improving safety and security throughout the facility. Um, the Ordinance Road Correctional Yard uh, covers, that's a project that's currently um, being worked on right now. Um, I believe the construction is back on track here um, as of yesterday. Um, so we're looking for that project to hopefully, hopefully be wrapped up um, before the fall. And then our final project is the Ordinance Road Comprehensive Reentry, Reentry Hub. Um, as identified as part of our um, space reutilization study, um, we think that a reentry hub is a great investment in utilizing the space to lower recidivism within the county. Um, we're looking forward to this hub being a shared space with our critical partners to provide services such as housing, transportation, labor, benefits, education, and much more. Additionally, this space will be utilized by internal incarcerated individuals, as well as the individuals that we supervise through house arrest and pre-trial services. So in closing, we'd like to thank the County Exec and his budget team, as well as the County Council for their time and consideration of this budget. Our hard-working, dedicated staff have a difficult job protecting the community. The detention facilities are basically small cities entrusted by the public to provide humane treatment of individuals in a safe and secure environment. This budget will allow us to continue to improve safety, morale, and the effectiveness of our overall correctional system. We remain committed to working together for providing the public safety, as well as we're prepared to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Great, thank you. I see Ms. Rodvian has a question.
Um, thank you very much for your presentation. I'm really excited about a lot of the work that you're doing in the um, in the Department of Corrections um, in the detention facilities. Um, I'm asking the same, similar questions to our various law enforcement, public safety um, entities, and in particular, I'm wondering if you could tell me, um, first off, I'm glad it sounds like you've made some headway in terms of recruiting, because my understanding from um, uh, maybe your presentation last year is that, you know, you were having a lot of um, correction, corrections officers, detention officers working um, extra shifts and a lot of overtime. And hopefully, your uh, fifty new um, officers has cut down on that a, a lot. Um, my, let me go to my question. So you, it sounds like you do have a, you know, you said a nine percent vacancy rate. And so just so I can kind of get an understanding of where the different agencies are, do you know what your current um, proposed salary, uh, starting salary for FY twenty-five is? And then um, the number, I know you gave us a percentage, but the number of vacancies that you have, both officer vacancies and civilian?
So, uh, first of all, thank you for that question. So first of all, thank you for that question. You know, we have had great success with recruiting. We've worked really hard with our personnel office. To change a couple of our processes. We've implemented a lot of different strategies to streamline and expedite. Our hiring practices with continuous postings and things that we hadn't traditionally done. I will say that we probably suffered coming out of COVID. And had a lot of retirements. So Ordinance Road was built in ninety eight. And with the twenty year retirement, we were starting to see those people sort of retire. As a group, I think we've stabilized a little from that, but we've also invested in marketing and some other areas to really. Try and attract people. As far as our existing vacancies for the department as a whole, I think we have fifty one total vacancies. And then by our last P S C report, we had roughly nineteen. Detention officer vacancies. But right now I have three people starting today, three detention officers starting today, and then five that are ready to start next week. So we have our numbers right around eleven. Which is definitely remarkable. We have seen a decrease in our overtime as a result of that. I was looking at pay periods where we had, you know, for Ordinance Roads up in excess of twenty thousand dollars in overtime. And I looked at a pay cycle, I think right before I did our presentation to the county exec and we had a pay period with. A thousand dollars in overtime. So we're definitely seeing the benefits of the staff. Right now, because there, we have about thirty in an academy class. We, we're going to spike a little bit back in overtime for eight weeks, getting those staff the second portion of their required training. I apologize for the phone ringing there. But definitely, you know, we're, we're putting in the work. I think our starting salary, I know right now it's fifty two five. And that's not including shift differential and some of the other stipends. Whether you achieve like a weapon certification. Pat, I don't know if we have the number for. For F Y twenty five or if that'll just be the three percent added to that for, or whatever the cost of living is.
Correct.
Okay. So.
Three percent?
Yep.
Okay.
Hello, Council, this is Bo with the Budget Office. I can confirm the, the detention officer's starting salary in F Y twenty five. Is fifty four thousand dollars. So that's roughly, yeah, roughly three percent increase.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Beth.
And then what is your, the total number of positions, the total number of officer positions that you, you know, to consider yourself fully staffed? It sounds like you're close. But what is the, the total number of positions that you have?
So for the entire department, it's four hundred and thirty six. And Pat, is it two hundred and ninety eight?
It's two sixty four for D M's.
Okay, two sixty four for detention officers. And that doesn't include like captains and. Lieutenant, right? Okay.
Okay, thank you. I think that helps me get. An understanding of where you're at and I did note in that you do have a pretty significant vacancy rate in the category of booking officers.
Yes, yeah, I think it's around thirty one percent.
Are they, are they in the same bargaining unit as the detention officers in terms of their starting salary?
No, they're not.
Okay, what is, what is their starting salary?
Pat, do you have that? I want to say it was thirty eight to forty something. I can't remember off the top of my head. If you give us a minute, I can have Pat pull that up before our P S C report.
It's thirty one five hundred.
Thirty one thousand five hundred? Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
One of the, just, just to sort of give it a little, maybe a little more context, one of the challenges is. When that position gets looked at, it's seen as a clerical position. And what doesn't get factored into it is the type of contacts that, you know. That they're having to do this work. So, you know, they're, they're, they're making decisions that are, you know, scrutinized, you know, or they're. You know, having communications with the judges, you know, and the, the clerks of the court trying to make sure that, you know, this, these calculations are done correctly. And I think that that level of detail and the amount of training that has to go into know the nuances of. The laws and the requirements gets missed when somebody says, oh, you're answering phones and you're, you know, you're filing paperwork and you're doing calculations. The, the importance, importance of it gets missed in the factoring of how critical that job is because the difference is. If you hold somebody too long, we're violating their constitutional rights. And the pressure to get that right with the varying degrees of. You know, different judges and the way some of these sentence orders come out. It's, it's not easy. It takes years to master and just when you think you've mastered it. Somebody writes something new from the bench and you have to figure out how to interpret that or the laws change. And you're going back and, and looking at who you have. So, you know, we definitely see this across the industry that this is a, you know. An area that just gets, gets missed in, you know, from a salary perspective. And we're definitely feeling that with the vacancies and turnover that we have in that area.
Are they part of the bargaining unit?
They are part of a different bargaining unit. I don't know if it's the five sixty three or the. I have it behind me here.
And while you're checking, that's starting salary should have been forty one and not thirty one.
Okay, that's a little better.
It's a little bit better than.
But still, when you have a thirty one percent vacancy rate, that's pretty concerning, especially when you're talking about ensuring constitutional rights are insured and protected.
Yeah, they're, they're part of the local two five six three. So they're mixed in, you know, that group again. Just mixed in with, with varying positions, office support assistants and. Human Service aides and crime scene technicians. And our correctional, they're in the same bargaining unit though with our correctional records clerks.
Okay.
So those two groups are in that same bargaining unit.
All right, I, I appreciate that information. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see any further questions for detention at this time, Mr. Klein and, and team. I appreciate your detailed presentation and I appreciated the time you took to spend with me when I came out to Ordinance Road. It was, it was very helpful for my base knowledge of detention. Anybody else have any questions? Last call for questions. All right. Well, thank you very much for your time.
Very much.
To you and your entire team. Thank you for all you do every day for Anarundel County citizens. So thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much for your time.
I believe our last department for today is the Department of Emergency, the Office of Emergency Management, Pretty Emrick. When you've got your team assembled, good morning, you can get started. Thank you.
All right. Good morning, everyone. I do realize I am the last agency. Between you and ending this process, so I will be efficient as possible. I'd like to introduce my deputy director, Joe Corona. And my budget analyst. I think Darlene, there's too many moving squares. Darlene, there you are. Okay. And our management assistant, Stephanie Arnt. I'd really like to thank this team for all the work they have done on the budget. A special shout, shout out to Darlene. Who I know is moving on to another department, still within the county, so I can still call her if needed, but. I do appreciate all of her work these past couple of years, working with us on an operating budget and, and, and on our grants, excuse me. All right, so I do have a presentation. I can share if you could bear with me one moment.
And while you're doing that, if I could direct the council, my name is Darlene Flim with Budget Office. And the Office of Emergency Management's budget begins on page three hundred in your proposed budget book. Thank you.
Can everybody see? My shared slide with the presentation?
No, I think we have a PDF.
PDF, okay, let me try this again. My apologies. Okay, how about now?
Yeah. Got it.
All right.
Need to be in presenter mode and that's it.
Yep. All right, thank you. F Y twenty five budget presentation for the Office of Emergency Management. Thank you for this opportunity, council members, to talk about our office and our budget. You will find. We are on page three hundred on the budget book. So we are a small but mighty office, as you can see. We probably have one of the smaller budgets among public safety. And it's sometimes hard to classify emergency management. We do a lot of work with public safety. But we also touch upon health and human services, economic recovery, et cetera. Because when a disaster happens, it impacts all aspects of our community's lives. And so we make sure to coordinate with a lot of the entities that, that serve our communities. So that's widespread across the county. A new aspect of emergency management is resiliency, climate resiliency, environmental resiliency. Because how, you know, land use goes on and before a hurricane or a tropical storm strikes. Really impacts how a community recovers. So we really are proud of our staff, our small and mighty staff. And the expansion of the field of emergency management that our staff has really, you know, met head on. The industry has expanded, so have the responsibilities and certifications. Of the personnel in emergency management. And that's really reflected not only in our staff, but in terms of our hiring process. I know everywhere in the county, there is a struggle with salaries. There's a struggle in recruiting the right people. So we have gone through that a little bit. To make sure that we have the right people in the right positions with the right credentials. We do rely on grant funding. And some of the positions that are in red are either fully grant funded or partially grant funded. It's a complicated relationship with grants. They could be your best friends, right? When you have all the grant money in the world. But sometimes when those grants go away, we have to make adjustments. So far, our grant level has been, our grant funding has been leveled. But starting next year, the federal government did hit all of our grants with a ten percent reduction. And if that's something that's to continue in the years to come, we will have to adjust in terms of positions. So some of our highlights in the past year, we have started doing annual reports. Because I feel it's important for our stakeholders and the community to understand what we have done and what the Office of Emergency Management focus on. So as you can see, we are divided into four units and we have metrics for each of those units. As you can see, sometimes in terms of like the number of activations, we actually went down in twenty twenty three. Because sometimes emergencies are unpredictable in terms of whether they happen or whether they don't happen. So what do we do during those blue sky days? And in our training and exercise, we have increased the number of trainings and exercises that we have. To make sure that our county agencies are prepared when the unfortunate happens. And that has included an increased training compliance of our county representatives that help serve in the Emergency Operations Center. That in blue sky days, we also made sure to increase our communications and outreach to the community. There are many stages in a disaster in terms of the preparedness before the disaster, the response. And the recovery. And we have to make sure that the community and the county agencies are prepared. So in the communications and outreach, we have a lot of different ways in which we reach many different sectors of the community. And that is one way emergency management is expanding. Everybody prepares for a disaster differently, everybody responds differently, and everybody recovers. And whether that's a vulnerable population, the elderly, the youth. To certain communities in our, in our county, we have to make sure to reach all of those needs. So just to highlight a few of the communications and outreach. Our annual Houses of Worship Seminar, which actually has just been promoted as a best practice by FEMA. Reaching out to those houses of worship to make sure that they are protected and they understand the security and preparedness that they can take. Our Hurricane Camp, which promotes female young women in the field. Of not only emergency management but public safety, again encouraging that inclusion and that diversity in the field among the community. And also helping coordinate the outreach coordination group in the county. To make sure the outreach among all county agencies. We are aware of what the outreach is, the different presentations and how everybody can be involved. And we talk about special projects, hazard mitigation, which I will talk about a little bit later. Is a mandated plan from FEMA that all jurisdictions need to have. But it really goes into the resilience of Anarundel County and the hazards that impacted and what we can do to mitigate them. But understanding what is the long-term planning that goes into it. We have also expanded our grant capabilities. Understanding that grants are very important to emergency management. We converted one of our positions to be an agency grant lead. To not only manage our grants, which I talked about the ten percent reduction that's coming up. That not only impacts emergency management, but some of our grant money does go to law enforcement and to fire to buy equipment. So understanding that pursuing other grant avenues that we could use to help support our first responders. But also to support our operations and really any other operations that. That help with the resiliency of the community, no matter in what kind of emergency situation we might face. But again, to make sure that we're, we understand we're in a fiscally conservative times and we want to make sure to pursue. Whatever kind of external funding that we can. And in terms of our planning achievements, constantly working on plans. Just because a plan is done, doesn't mean that it's not a living, breathing document that needs to be updated. That needs to be constantly reviewed and that's where our training and exercises come in. So we talk about blue sky days and then what happens when the unthinkable occurs. And so this is what emergency management, we have the all hazards, whole community approach. Especially when, when you think the unthinkable, this could never happen. But with the Key Bridge, the unfortunate incident with the Key Bridge. The activities that surrounded it is something that we always prepare for day in and day out because of our all hazards approach. So in terms of coordinating with federal, state, and local entities. We supported Unified Command with a response and recovery effort through an onsite liaison officer. That not only represented local jurisdictions. But became integrated into the Unified Command and their Joint Information Center as an Assistant Public Information Officer. Again, that's the kind of skill that our office has. That they could transition to even a larger response and to assist and become part of the Unified Command of such an incident. We also established the Disaster Assistance Center with the Small Business Administration. And that's the coordination of partnerships that we have built upon through, throughout those blue sky days. So local, state, and community members came together because we understood there were workers impacted. There were businesses impacted and they needed our help. And that came together very quickly. And I really like to thank the county agencies that sometimes are not typically involved. In a disaster recovery or Economic Development Corporation, a Workforce Development Corporation. Who really understood the whole community approach, was very quick to get the progress up and running and to coordinate with us on this. I'd also like to thank the, the first site that hosted the Disaster Assistance Center. The Orundel Christian Church and the second site, the Glenn Bernie Library. Again, incorporating all of our community members to help in an unfortunate situation. We also coordinated weekly recovery meetings, again to establish situational awareness. Whether you're the lead in terms of the response and recovery of an incident or supporting partner. Having that coordination and situational awareness is key. And again, what we do day in and day out in the planning and the training and exercises. This is the system that we come up, that we have in terms of incident command and situational awareness. This is the system that we come up, that we have in terms of incident command, the situational awareness. That assists with any type of situation. So the new initiative, the only new initiative for FY twenty-five, um, is additional funding for a hazard mitigation plan. As I said, it is a mandated plan from FEMA that has to be accomplished. Um, if we don't have this plan, our future grant funding, especially for environmental projects, will be put in jeopardy. Um, FEMA does pay for the majority of the study costs. Twenty thousand dollars is a responsibility of Anarundel County to cover some of the consultant costs. We are in the midst of the planning right now, so our one-time request is twenty thousand dollars to make sure we get this plan completed. But this plan does not just sit alone. We're coordinating with other resiliency, resilient plans that are also in the county, the sea level rise plan. The Resilience Authority is also another key stakeholder in the development and updating of this plan. So again. Looking at Anarundel County is environmental impacts, the future of its resiliency. And making sure we could mitigate whatever we can to have a brighter future. So I will pause right there. I can continue with the capital improvement project, whatever you prefer. Do you want to stop for questions now?
I think we can keep going.
All right. So our one capital improvement project is a big capital improvement project is the Joint nine-one-one Public Safety Center. Um, it's on page eighty-two of the Capital Budget and Program Book. So the accomplishments to date, obviously, this has been a long talked about project. Um, and you know, the, the pathway to completion will also be long. So talking about some of the accomplishments we've had, um. Maybe two years ago, having the comprehensive public safety study to lay the groundwork. And what is the requirements for the consolidation and to identify the gaps that we'll have. We have identified a selected a slot, a site, excuse me. And then we have hired an architect and um, also I'm working with Mission Critical. Um, on the reorganization of what a consolidated nine-one-one emergency operations center would look like. So this past winter, we've had kickoff meetings with both entities, so Mans Woodward and Mission Critical. In terms of outlining the expectations, the next steps, beginning the design process of it. Um, and this is a huge undertaking between police, fire, and the Office of Emergency Management. Um, you know, our nine-one-one um, dispatch, uh, call takers, um, the whole operations. Truly needs an updated center, and we realize this. We want to enhance the operations. And we feel absorbing the operations under emergency management is the best way to go. And so having all these entities work together to making sure that we address the right pathway. And take all the considerations into place is key. So we've been having these meetings with Mission Critical partners and Mans Woodward to deliver the best possible building. And the best possible organization. But there are challenges. This is a tough undertaking, right? A consolidation of two separate entities between police and fire. And making sure that we understand the staff's concerns and their needs. Um, it's some that, that's even more difficult than building a brand-new, you know, state-of-the-art. Public Safety Center. And so we are, we recognize that, and we want to make sure enough attention is paid to that staff consolidation. But of course, we have the master plan because we have to make sure the facility is up to par. Um, we have a budget that, you know, it's a very generous budget, but, you know. More could be spent, I guess, in terms of an overall build-out. So we want to be. Very conscientious of building the best building we have within the budget that is set about. We are sharing um, the site with the Fire Training Academy, so we are also working in conjunction with them. In terms of making sure that both of us have enough space and that we have what we need in terms of enhancing our operations. Um, and then with the community expectations and with the stakeholders, making sure that um. We initiate that communication with the community and with the stakeholders. So they truly understand what an important project that this is and how this will enhance our public safety operations. So some benchmarks are twenty twenty-four. Um, we are still in the process of the design phase, so we're hoping. With obviously uh personnel input to finalize that design phase in the summertime. Uh, we have conducted tours of neighboring facilities. Uh, we did go to DC to their nine-one-one center. Um, and to their emergency operations center to get an understanding of best practices, obviously of how other jurisdictions do things. And again, that community and stakeholder engagement, um, and whether that's through town halls, surveys, et cetera. We want to make sure the voices are heard, there's transparency, and that everyone understands what is happening. And that's it. Thank you all. I just wanted, Joe or Stephanie, have I missed anything?
No, you're good.
Okay, excellent presentation, Ms. Emmerich. Do we have any questions for the Office of Emergency Management? On either their operating or their capital budgets? Maybe everybody's just ready for lunch, I don't know.
I, I try to, I ha- try to have it concise so that we can end the day well.
Well, I'll ask one thing. As we, as we move to, to construct and and combine our, into our. Joint nine-one-one facility, which is super exciting, uh, do you know if um, the Office of Emergency Management or Central Services is? Um. Looking into what to do with the current building?
I know there are some discussions in place about what to do with the current building. I don't have probably the latest up-to-date information, but I can get you that information.
Well, as it's in my Glenn Burney Town Center, I like to know everything. Um, certainly don't want a vacant building.
Oh, I'm sorry, I may have misunderstood. I thought you're talking, are you talking about Millersville or where we currently rec- reside in the emergency operations center?
Where you currently reside.
Yes, my apologies, I misunderstood. Um, the future plan is to hopefully expand. Um, the backup nine-one-one center that is in the Glenn Burney location. Um, so we have a bigger uh, alternative site. Um, for continuity of operations planning. But that's one of the considerations.
Okay, so you would, you would, you would remain in that space?
Just the backup nine-one-one.
Just the call center?
Yeah, but that again is one of probably the many options that are being discussed.
Mm-hmm. Okay, I'll have to share my ideas with what could be, how that building could be utilized.
I, you know, I, I went through some of those presentations of what the future of the town center could look like, so I, I do appreciate that.
Fantastic. Well, if we have no other questions for the Office of Emergency Management, uh, I think the only thing left to say is thank you. Thank you for what you do every day. And thank you for this uh, very good, effective presentation, and um. We'll see you again.
All right, thank you, everyone, for your support. Truly appreciate it.
Take care.
Take care.
Okay, team, is there any other business to be brought before the county council at this time? May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
There a second?
Led better.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. The county council is adjourned until Wednesday, May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four. When we will meet virtually for the administration's. Rebuttal to the FY twenty, that doesn't sound right. We're adjourned till May twenty-ninth. For the auditor, we're gonna hear from the auditor first?
No, I'm sure the auditor will be submitting a report on Tuesday. And Ms. Bowler can uh, explain a little bit more. We will be doing that via email and it will be posted to the website. And then on a Wednesday, we will hear from the administration, and if you have any other questions for Madam Auditor at that time, you may ask them as well. Sorry for the clarification.
No, no, that's fine. I'm sure Madam Auditor briefed us. Um, at the beginning of this process, and I was just reading this going, wait a minute, what, what is the administration rebuttal? Okay, that makes more sense. This is a new process for all of us. This is great. And, but Wednesday, May twenty-ninth, we're meeting at nine AM virtually. Is that?
As of now, yes.
Okay, nine AM virtually for the administration's rebuttal of the FY twenty-five budget. Thank you, everybody. Have a fantastic Memorial Day weekend. Stay safe and um, let's hope for good weather.